I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's like, um, time. I can't tell if that's a minute early or if it's six thirty. Those of you who have an agenda, I'm going to call it to order in the roll call.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chiandra here, Mr. Wisswasser?
Here.
Mr. Amorici?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Mr. Fius-Blis?
Here.
Mr. Benzey's absent tonight.
Okay, item two, which is your civil reflections, bringing down the pledge allegiance and then shortly after, or right after that, have a moving silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve of the agenda?
I do. Good to go? Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were announced. I'm proposing to move, or one item and eliminate another. Number thirteen, large A, small c. I would propose to eliminate that since we have not yet done supervisors, or excuse me, the superintendent's review, as we discussed two weeks ago. And due to that, I would propose we move small letter d from introduction and discussion to action, because we will need to move to a month-to-month contract with the superintendent until that time that we renegotiate. So I would move to approve the agenda with those two changes.
And those changes again are?
Thirteen, large A, small c eliminated.
So there's the unfinished business, items introduction?
Yes.
C redline?
Yes.
And you want to remove that or to?
Eliminate that, yes, until we have reviewed her, as we discussed two weeks ago. And then move thirteen, large A, small d to large B, small d, so that we are able to move to a month-to-month, since her contract expires any day now.
How second?
All right, I'll make sure I'm understanding for those that are out there, you're going to take thirteen, unfinished business, D as in David, the small one, and you're going to eliminate that?
No.
No.
Okay. Try me again.
Okay, thirteen, large A, small c, yep, eliminate that one.
C you're going to eliminate.
Thirteen, large A, D, move to large B, D, so that we can take action on it.
So you're going to say items for action will be month-to-month, so you'll add small d to items for action, new business?
Yes, please.
Okay, got it. Now, sir. Look at, okay, is it on minister?
Yeah, I know. She blew my mind with the question. I mean, we discussed it sort of last time. I mean, I don't care. Doesn't anybody feel strongly about where we put it? As long as it's on action, so we can move it today.
Does the move for motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Yeah.
Does that sound? Month-to-month is an action, which one are you talking about?
The, when you move the B, D, it takes action to do that, and anything that needs to be done is a day, a third, and a month, and the contract goes out on the subject.
Seven.
Correct, and that's why items for action to vote on D, is that correct? Make sure I'm understanding.
Yep.
Because that's month-to-month.
That's correct.
Yeah, and that's an item action.
Yep.
That's an item for action, so you have to vote on it.
Yep.
Okay, is that true?
Yep, that's what his motion is it.
Yes.
And I think you've done correctly.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Yes, he made it, he seconded it.
I'm sorry, what? Ryan's motion was to change the agenda. And then Jason, you second? Okay, so now we take vote.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Amorici?
Yes.
Mr. Fius-Blis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chiandra, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, disclosure of conflict of interest, is there any? Doesn't appear to be public statements, which would be item five. Is there any public statement? Okay, we got one.
I'll do one. Meg Ritchie, Outer Drive, and just one point I had on another item for action was, excuse me, unfinished business under B, capital B, lowercase c, and short-term rentals regulation and enforcement planner. I saw it on the agenda, this meeting, but I didn't, I don't remember, did you guys discuss that last meeting? Okay, because it is on the items for action, and I was wondering, maybe you could have a little more discussion about that and let us know. I see that there's, there was a letter from Karen like two weeks ago, and then about two complatents, two complaints, with two complainants, and that it was going to need like, you know, five different departments, and then ordinances and regulations and enforcements. And all that happened in two weeks? Okay, no. All right. I guess, I guess, depending on how your discussion goes this evening, but I would think that that would be something they would want to think about a little bit longer, and and maybe there isn't anything closer to compare Bath with than New Orleans? Am I completely misunderstanding this? You know, whether, number one, how do you get something up to the board with just two complainants when complaining about the lake for years now? But to stay on track, I'm just wondering why such a long, you know, New Orleans is not bad. And I can see how you would take something from that, but usually we go to Langsberg or both have lakes, you know, to use something comparable. So that's my statement. Any questions or comments?
Is there any other public statement? Okay. Thanks, Mary. I don't see. All right, our item six is county, state, federal, or any other agency. Consent agenda, item seven. Do you have a motion to accept?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Amor- Mr. Amorici?
Yes.
Mr. Fius-Blis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chiandra, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have approval of the amendments, item eight, which is minutes of the Board of Trustee Work Session.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Trustee Meeting on September nineteenth, and the Board of Trustee Work Session Meeting on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All right, what I'm going to do is a very simple one step, sir. The October third meeting, which is denied, you've already addressed the employment agreement, correct? So that that's been changed? Okay. Your amendment changed it, so?
I'm sorry, I'm not, what?
Since discussion was held, Township Superintendent on the employment agreement.
Where are you?
For September nineteenth.
All right, I'm with you.
Okay. So your amendments changed that, so the October third meeting just shows the changes. Is that correct?
I think that motion failed.
No, the motion was to whether or not to postpone it. What I'm saying is October third, we were supposed to have this to be brought back, and what you've done with your amendments, I just want to make sure that's correct.
My read of that, Maria, says that the motion was made and then it failed.
No, I understood, and that was to postpone it.
Right, and bring it back October third.
And so that's what I'm asking, that's not being brought back, your amendment's changed it, is that correct?
I didn't change it because it lost, the motion died, so there was nothing to change. It changed the agenda today.
Okay, page five, that's, that's okay. On page five, it says that you wanted to, the treasurer wants to renegotiate to include the proper structure. I'm asking, has that been done yet? Because apart, that hasn't been?
I didn't ask to renegotiate it myself, I said the township should probably renegotiate that, I don't suggest it for the township.
Okay.
I said, as a forward comment, I said that we should renegotiate the contract.
The township.
I said, I just, I don't renegotiate contracts.
Well, that's what I counter-wondered with it.
You wondered that?
Yes, I did, that's why, yes, that's why I'm asking. Okay, so you need to put township, and?
The statute is available, you can read that.
I understand that, as the minutes say. Okay, on page six. Let's see, trustee, let's see, and do not, oh. It was suggested that that be brought back at a later meeting, the agreement for the computer for the IT, but it didn't have a date, page six.
I believe it was the purchasing policy.
Is that what that's?
It says purchasing policy.
No, I understand what it says, but is that what that's referencing? To be brought back at a later date?
I think so.
Okay. Now I'm just questioning. Okay. Now we have the second discussion, take a vote.
Mr. Chikins-Blis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chiandra, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Approval vouchers? Item nine.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as amended.
Second.
Discussion? Nine, so?
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chiandra, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Amorici?
Yes.
Mr. Fius-Blis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten is the treasury report.
Madam Chairperson, due to the fact that last week we had another incident of COVID, the township and I was directly exposed, luckily enough, I dodged it one more time. I tested negative, but I were put in four days of last week, work ended today, to get caught back up, but obviously I was restricted from the office, so I had no report for it tonight, but I'll have you on next week for next one, next meeting.
Next meeting, thank you.
Maybe next week, maybe next time.
Next time, next whatever.
Next time you see me here, I'll have some say.
That sounds reasonable. Okay, with the appointments, item eleven, there is none. Item twelve, Township Committee Reports, doesn't appear that there is any. So we're now at item thirteen, which is the unfinished business, introductions and discussion. And it looks like, Brad, are you going to be discussing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and Trustees. So in reference to item little a, or lowercase a, the municipal contracts, this is relations to the SRF project that ultimately SCUMA is looking to try and report with, this is in the improvements at the plant facility. As I believe the last time I shared with you folks that we were selected is in the fundable range of the SRF program, so we're looking to continue that process forward. We did receive a 10% principal forgiveness, so we're thankful for that, the project can definitely use any help that we can get, especially in these times. So the contracts that I believe it was included in your packet, this was the first round, the draft, to ultimately go to municipalities, to then share with their legal counsel to provide some comments back, at which time we'll throw them comments together from the four municipalities, and then ultimately draft the final version. So what you have in front of you tonight is just the first draft in principle. If you were to pull out past contracts related to SCUMA, you'd see these resemble the original contracts with Clinton County, so actually when the authority was formed with the four municipalities brought together, which originally was Clinton County, not Southern Clinton, not SCC MUA as it is now. So these contracts reflect that project that was done in seventy-six to nineteen eighty for the original plant. It is not word for word, but you'll see in verbatim that it's fairly similar in design and meant to be that way, so it's familiar with everybody. And these were drafted by the bond council that ultimately SCUMA hired and had to have in place in order to participate in the SRF program. So I'm happy to answer any questions related to them if I can, if not, I'll make sure I get you an answer from the bond council.
I'm sure you can answer it, you always have a good plan.
I'll give it my best.
That's, it says that the debt is for twenty to thirty years, but it's not to go past forty.
Correct.
So we don't know at this time whether SCUMA's going to be the twenty or thirty?
No.
We don't know if it'll go past forty.
At this time, SCUMA, the Budget and Finance Committee and the original plan was intended to go for thirty, but the reason it was left vague was there's still some time for municipalities to decide if they want to put some upfront money into the project, in which term might change ultimately the amortization schedule from twenty to thirty if so decided, just kind of depends, it's similar to evaluating a mortgage, if you would.
So basically, you're kind of waiting to see what the other?
Everybody's looking.
Everybody else is looking at as to whether they're going to do it.
Yep, thirty would be the most, you can always select twenty or thirty in the SRF program.
Okay.
And really, it's the evaluation of, again, upfront money, can everybody afford it, and ultimately, the interest rate, taking that into account as well. So the interest rate at twenty years is one point eight seven five, thirty years is two point one two five.
One eight three five?
One eight seven five, I'm sorry if I said that.
No, no, we just might, yeah, one point seven five, and that's for the thirty?
The twenty.
The twenty.
Yep, two point one two five for thirty.
I'm ready to add a question. Brad, on the 10% forgiveness that are under the project?
Yes, sir.
Is that, what happens if we have a, some engineering changes, so we have an engineering change, engineering, unfortunately, a lot of these contracts typically have thirty, forty percent engineering cost up and down, or does it, do we still get ten, do we wait and get our 10% after the engineering overage, or do we, does that happen right off the gate and right out of the vehicle?
So unfortunately, no. So the short answer to your question is no, and I'll give you a little explanation to that. Typically, the SRF program has a very significant amount of money that is unclaimed or unused every year. They have seen a significant influx of projects, ones exceeding their nearly billion-dollar expenditure this year. So their plan, which is yet to be finalized, this is in draft form, what I'm telling you, is they're saying, no, don't plan for a lot of extra money from us, if need be. The 10% principal forgiveness is kind of locked, they're using basically some of their funds, and they're trying to spread that out through two year, two cycles, so the twenty-three cycle and twenty-fourth cycle, at least this is what they're telling us in the draft plan. What we did in our original project estimate is we kind of, we blended in some contingencies, and I'm saying blended because it's, you can't necessarily put in extra money in there, but we tried to account for a worst-case scenario in all aspects. So we feel fairly confident, we've got some numbers back from contractors that tell us that we're in a range even today, which is, is good, I just got updated numbers today again, and so again, all things look good, but we're, that 10% principal forgiveness for property, that's about what we're going to get no matter what. The SRF automatically builds in six percent, so if you run into a problem during the project and say, change this, it can go six percent more, but that will not change the principal forgiveness, that's stuck pretty much at that one point six number.
So whatever you determine, if you run into an issue, six percent is the highest you could go?
Yes, through SRF, yep.
Does the Township Board have the opportunity to decide on the twenty or thirty-year program before we start the project and accept the project, if we have to wait until we're done at the end, at least of the project?
Nope, we'll have a chance to do, we have a chance to basically make that decision right up till that last month of closing. And right now, we were trying to target what Eagle has labeled as two point oh, which is quarter two point oh, which would be closing in the end of March. We've talked at a board level that we might have to squeeze it out, just because these contracts in there are complex, and get through everybody and make sure everybody's good and comfortable, we might just push that to two point five, which would be a closing in May, so we'd have to have that, hopefully, we'll have our bids back by then, and we'll probably make a better decision, and ultimately, if our bids come back low, a twenty-year might be an option, and we'll probably make that, probably have a better guess at that point, and yes, the municipalities will have, obviously, a say in that if we're low, yes.
And that'll be May of twenty-three or twenty-four?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Twenty-three is our target, so we're looking to push this, put this out to bid sometime in January.
So it's like, is that right?
Yep. Well, it's not our budget, no, it's their budget.
Their budget, but that's why.
We could take money out of our budget and put less money in it.
So when you say we'll have a say, is that through us as a board vote, or through our two votes on your board?
Initially, it happened at our, at our board, yes, but whether that communication comes back through here, I'm assuming it would, there'll be some time, I guess that's what I'm alluding to, there will be some time where that can happen.
It would come from financial obligation from the Township, from the board, and not the utility boards, it would come from this board to decide whether they want to, what kind of debt load they want to do, how long they want to take and extend themselves out.
And then our two votes would vote in that way?
No, we would vote, it would come back here to the Township Board, and it would vote here at the Township Board, because it would have affected our financial statements here, is how it would have, how it would affect it, so you, the two members that are over there representing the township's interests and the authorities, the total separate authority in the financial statement versus here, we're, this here, if we're going to take money out of our own coffers, the whole Township Board, the seven-member Township Board, would be able to take and decide that, the two members that's at the utility authority, one which still even have a vote, the Township Board finances, still even have to save our money here that we have, because you got two different funds working, you work with our SOAR fund and we're going with their SOAR fund over there. So it would come back here to this board, and you'd have to decide, and you want to look at that really close, because back before everything went to heck here with the interest rates in the beginning, I believe Karen, I think we talked with Mayor Tilly, we, you mean, it made a difference of three, four hundred thousand dollars over the course of years, and there's about savings going in, like, three, four hundred thousand dollars. And thirty years of debt for this project, never in the history of Bath Township, well, even before I was here, but in the history of Bath Township, there's never been a thirty year debt for anything here at the township. The original SOAR project, what we did wasn't worth nearly what this is, so this is big, but I mean, look at what we're doing today compared to what we did before, and how much we have, we're looking back when they started here, so you need to think of that, and you need to look at that very closely, and by spring here, you need to have a good decision. And your SOAR fund is ramping up, it's, it's not in poor shape, but it's, it's never going to be in great shape, because this is a very volatile fund, but you need to look at that and make a good business decision, as to how many years you want to find this thing for. The interest rate's better, to the SRF, I don't think you can do anything better than what you're going to do.
No, and right now, I mean, I just got a notification from Michigan Class, it's three point zero one, so money in the bank right now is making it more than you're paying, so.
Yes.
And that's liquid money at Michigan Class, so you can get even higher on the CD if something.
Well, we have, we have a million dollars at Michigan Class, it's our fund right now, so that's what we're doing.
Thanks, Brad.
Sure, truly, any other questions? Yep, I'll start.
See, so, I think we're good. Unless you want to just stand there and do the lift station?
Yep.
That was the plan.
I don't mind walking, but.
Because I wonder, he's not moving, so I figured he was doing the lift station, so.
Yeah.
All right, and we're on beam, lift station two oh two.
Yes, so we're bringing this forward. Ultimately, station two oh two on Slate Road is likely just as critical as any station in the system, but, but station two oh two and two oh one are basically the main transmitters of all the sewage in Bath Township. The simple difference between station two oh two and two oh one is one's at the bottom of the hill and one's at the end of the line, but ultimately, they, it has to all go through both of them. Station two oh two, in the past, anybody that's been here for quite some time, even before myself, has had some longstanding issues, in two thousand and ten, the township put a decent amount of money into upgrading that station, as there was some significant home damage in that area related to pump failures and, and some other issues there. Since then, things have been working well, but we're taking those lessons learned from the past and hopefully trying to get ahead of it. The pumps that were put in in two thousand and ten were great at the time and recommended at that time, but ultimately have had multiple significant failures over the years, both have been rebuilt or refabricated at least three or four times. One particular pump showing some excessive wear internally, where we're starting to see increased amperage, where we're concerned that its life is rather shortened, and due to the criticalness, that is not a station we prefer to have one particular pump in, because we lose our redundancy, so I directed our staff to ultimately look at what options we have, and ultimately, we're seeing a significant change, likely through the increased capability of AI and modeling, where we can see a significant reduction in horsepower at that station, going from a sixty-horse down to, you can see the recommended pump being the thirty-four horse pump, so we're nearly cutting that in half, so we'll have a significant reduction in energy consumption if the board does choose to move forward with this, but we would like to take that old pump, bring it in-house, fix it up the best we can with minimum dollars, but use it as a backup for that station, we can also use it as a backup at another station in the township at two oh eight as well, if we need to be, but it's to add to the redundancy, and we've done pretty well with our budget, our in-house budget for Bath this year, so we were able to contribute some funds, so we want to try to take advantage we were able to contribute some funds, so we want to try to take advantage of that. So that's what we're here tonight to ask for, that ability to try to do that. So that covers this particular pump.
Quick question.
Sure.
I, I think I'm understanding what you're saying, that according to this, there's X amount of dollars they're gonna cost to replace pump two oh two. We have X amount of dollars that are returned to us because of overpayment or the fact we didn't use it or whatever reason. We have X amount of dollars that come back. So if I'm understanding what you're saying, according to this, there's dollars that you're willing to put forward and then we do the remaining, is that, how much do we have come back?
It's not, we have an equipment reserve over there that has more than three hundred thousand dollars in it.
Okay.
So if the pleasure of this board is to not expend anything out of township coffers at this point, it could come out of the equipment fund that's.
That's what I was gonna ask, okay.
Yep.
So what you're saying then is, what you've listed, this Kennedy Industries dollar amounts and these dollar amounts, when you're doing this in Cooper, correct? So if you take those four dollar amounts, that's what you're asking to subtract from the three hundred thousand?
No, no, no. That's, them are four different pump options.
That's what I, okay.
So just the Kennedy Industry one would be our recommendation, that's due to the decrease in force, significant horsepower, which will ultimately equate to about twenty percent savings at that station, just for that particular pump. So that's the why we're recommending the pump, even though it's not the lowest priced pump, and that's why the justification is there.
That's thirty-six thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then you're doing this in Cooper, you're looking at forty-two?
Yep, that was just another pump option, but so we're not recommending that.
Okay.
Yep, each, each one is a different option.
Okay. So really, what we're looking at is one dollar amount?
Yep.
That subtract from the three hundred thousand?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Twenty-one thousand, nine twenty-five is what you were short on, that's what you're gonna subtract. Does that mean it come out of lift station reserve fund or equipment reserve fund?
That, that's an option. It was, it was lift station reserve, Bath Lift Station Reserve Fund.
Yeah, I got.
Is that fund in good shape? You got a good fund balance?
It's nearly three hundred thousand.
That's three hundred thousand.
That's the one you were, you called it the.
My, my.
Yeah, that's, okay.
They still remember, do you think?
Yeah, that's all.
Yes.
Okay, so any questions?
That's kind of how Brian's.
We were hoping so. I was, I was glad that we had some budgeted monies that we felt comfortable putting forward a couple, maybe to ease that off a little bit. So yeah, we're happy, we're real happy with these numbers. Things are real crazy out there right now, and we were pretty happy to see these numbers come back the way they did.
Save your money here at home, folks, and use it to buy down your debt for thirty years.
Do you have any idea how long after, if this board makes a decision at the meeting on October seventeenth, what the turnaround time would be?
Initially, when these quotes were handled, it said up to twelve weeks. I'm not, that changes rather quickly, so.
Be three months.
Now that we know that this is for sure a path, I can kind of confirm that tomorrow and let you know.
Okay. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we're on unfinished person's thirteen. You know, you're. We still should move that, so we should see the, we move that, correct? So now we're on item fraction, capital D. Does that sound right?
Yep.
Okay.
Did we need to vote on that last, at all?
It's gonna come back to you on October seventeenth.
No, you're good. Any questions? Power out. That's, the end of the call is, but that's a good. All right, that says the acceptance of the two oh three, two oh four capital improvement plan. Okay, Miles.
So like you guys saw last meeting, this is the agenda item for the capital improvement plan through two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-seven, from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven. There were two, if I can get to in here, there were two different discretionary items that were scored by the planning commission. There. So one was the multi-sport court down at the park here by Park Lake, and then pour-in-place replacement for the park by Park Lake. So the multi, or the pour-in-place scored higher at eighty-five out of a hundred and thirty, with the court scoring lower at a forty-eight out of one thirty. There was some confusion last time, and obviously, we're open to ways to display this data about the cost. So it, what it's saying here on this table, which is on page eleven of the CIP, is that the, the, both projects are intended to be implemented next year at the cost shown. If they are not implemented, they will be re-scored by the planning commission every following year they're not implemented, and that price will be adjusted according to inflation in that year, carrying out to the application period, which is twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Quick, quick question.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is that what's different, they've had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Is that this project will stay in-house, for lack of a better word, until twenty, twenty-seven?
Yeah, through the application period, so that is a little bit different this time. So instead of applying, like, for each project every year to help, I mean, kind of the point of the CIP is to be able to help plan out for projects coming in the future, realizing what the budget is now, thinking about the budget, potential budget in the future. So applicant now, can now apply through that five-year timeline.
If there's someone who comes next year and applies, that placeholder that you have in the first place or in the other venue would be this park multiple.
So if neither of these projects are picked up, they'll just be automatically scored and priced next year?
Correct.
And if a third project is to come in and be added, then there will just be three projects on next year.
Oh, okay. This isn't a placeholder, it's just, you look at it every year and review.
Through the period they applied for.
Right. My other question that has to do with this is, what's missing?
I'm not sure.
Well, your other, your other capital improvement plans have always had a lot more pages. So is there something missing, or is it just the way that's laid out?
Well, this is my first one, so.
You guys got an answer for it? If he doesn't have, then you guys do.
And this is one of the most complete capital improvement plans I've seen and worked on, so.
Oh, no, I'm not saying it's not complete. I'm just saying that I know if you saw a capital improvement plan before, a couple of years ago, there's more to it. What I'm saying is.
By now the planning commission has produced them, this is far more comprehensive.
So what's missing?
What's missing is applications for discretionary projects.
So it takes more pages to do.
The Park Lake group, the senior center group, Julie, I, I submits many, many page proposals. So I think a few years ago, the Park Lake Trail came up, and that was probably thirty pages.
Well, I see what you're saying.
That's a good point, Jason, yeah.
So basically, what you're saying is you would whittle down, say, a park trail from thirty-some pages to just putting it down as a score.
They didn't, they didn't, no, they didn't apply this year.
It was, it was, that's what would happen.
No, I would include if it was there, it just didn't happen to be there this year. So that probably significantly added to the length of the pack. Applications that were typically there that were much longer, as Jason said, are not present this year.
So if they're not present, then it's not here. If it were present, it would be here. Gotcha. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate that.
So one comment I have is, I, the distinction between discretionary versus non-discretionary. I, I, having spent time on the planning commission and having spent time on the board, what it meant is clearly is that they're, they're all discretionary, it should all be scored.
Yeah, so those are decisions I don't make, I kind of just determine what's gonna be scored by the PC and what, what is the planning commission.
So basically, what you're saying is they would come into the planning commission with their concept of what their project would be, and then that needs to be just scored by the plate. Gotcha. Nope, that's how I thought it worked, but I wasn't sure. And there was only two that came out this year, it was a little surprising.
Yeah, those were the two that were applied for, that was categorized as discretionary.
Okay, no. All right, that appears to be an item fraction, so if there's no more discussion, then you're ready for a report, though?
We would accept the twenty twenty-three, the second capital improvement plan.
Second.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Westwester?
Yes.
Mr. Almarichi?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, introduction or items for action B, large B, now we're on small B, for those who are following along. Introduction, first reading of zoning ordinance. Can you bro, sit down, Miles? Good to be there, Miles.
So you guys saw this one last time as well. There is a redline copy in here. You can see that there was an introduction to the Small Wind Energy Convergence System Ordinance, basically regulates wind power in the township. B was introduced, setting a minimum lot standard for what's called a small WGS, is the acronym, Wind Energy Convergence System. Setting the standard at one acre, kind of being a minimum lot size for that. There was also a small, just grammatical change at the very bottom under what's now P seven. But the main, the main change is, really the subject and question here tonight is the standard of a minimum of one acre. And this was done by the, it was applied for by an applicant for a tax amendment, and the standard was set by the planning commission to avoid conflict of land uses. It was applied for five acres, as I was mentioning last time, that was reduced to one acre, because that seemed to take care of ninety-nine percent of where this land issue conflict occurred, which is mostly dense neighborhoods, suburbs, planning developments, condos. So any questions about that?
I think you answered them all, I think.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to accept?
I'll move the first introduction and first reading of zoning ordinance amendment number thirty-one point eight-two as presented.
I'll suck a bit, be a little on the agenda here, if we talk about why or why not go for this.
Thank you. Now it's time for the discussion. Heather, you ready to discuss?
Why, what was going on here, guys?
I will not support this. So I don't think we're in the, I don't think we should be in the business of regulating or restricting solar or renewable energy. I think that one acre minimum is kind of an easy way out of addressing the issue of compatibility. I think people with parcels smaller than one acre should have the opportunity to have renewable energy sources.
I think what they're, now maybe I'm wrong, so jump in there, Miles. I think what he's talking about is the dense areas. I can have an acre up on the north end, and I think what this addresses is an acre parcel on the higher density areas. Is that?
No.
No, okay, true.
One acre in general across, across the whole township. Now, I mean, it's worth noting that in the rural areas, the lot minimum right now in the township is two acres. So there aren't too many parcels in, you know, in the northern rural part of the township that are one acre, which is why it was kind of reduced from five.
Okay, really discussion?
I have a question. The county at one time, Miles, was against any, any win in the township. Does this go against what they're proposing?
Uh, I, you know, I really can't speak to what the county's wind energy policy is or what their regulations look like, that's interesting, but, um.
I see your seventy-foot height, and theirs are a lot higher down in the next county.
Mm-hmm. And that's for the small, and we have large as well. So there's a different subpart of this ordinance that covers large wind energy conversion systems. The small is the ones that you would typically see more in a residential area, that's why the topic of lot sizes kind of come up.
I think the hard part of this is that, you know, these structures are getting smaller and smaller and smaller, and more efficient and effective. And so that, in combination with tax credits and other advantages, I'd love to see us support our community by removing barriers to renewable resources, not having.
Another discussion? Does it need to take over? Because we already, you know, first and second discussion. Ms. Howe? That was nasty. I'm your friend, I'm gonna have to agree with Jason, I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Westwester?
Yes.
Mr. Almarichi?
No.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes.
So it appears it passes. Change, three, four?
Yes.
Thank you for standing, because I'm gonna be glad to call you again.
Stand over this side.
All right, we're doing items for action C for short-term rentals.
Okay. Karen, just not to step on anybody's toes, you want me to get the background on this one? Okay, so I'll go into why the New Orleans article is here, but just to kind of talk about why we're talking about this and how we got here. Obviously, there's been a complaint included in you guys' packet tonight. I think the board is aware, as I'm aware, I haven't been here for years, like some people, but I've heard that these conversations have been going on for years, and complaints have been going on for years. And it's kind of recently come to the head, you know, through the pandemic, Airbnb's greatly grew in popularity. I know myself, in twenty twenty, I use Airbnbs more than I ever have in my life. And so, you know, there's a lot of pros that come with short-term rentals in a community. It brings, you know, new residents or new visitors to the community that wouldn't otherwise be there. It helps create side income for property owners. Maybe they have a house in Florida, and now they can rent out their house that they're not in part of the year. That helps them shore up, you know, another revenue stream, particularly if they're somebody that's on fixed income, somebody that's retired with multiple houses. So some, the economic benefits to short-term rentals there. Now, some of the externalities that can be caused and some of the things that have led to these complaints is typically the operator of the short-term rental isn't present. So somebody can book the short-term rental on Airbnb, on the app, saying that it's gonna be a party of two or a party of four, and now it's twenty college kids having a party, and you're living in your condominium trying to go to sleep at midnight. and you're living in your condominium trying to go to sleep at midnight. So just to throw out a random situation. That, that can be some of the negative sides. So there, the reason that this, what I would call, I guess, a case study was included from New Orleans is this is from the American Planning Association. Obviously, they put out a lot of case studies that kind of set best practices within the planning industry. The city of New Orleans, I think it's set in here around the mid two thousand and tens, kind of was one of the first large municipalities in America to kind of tackle the short-term renting issue. And I like this one because it shows kind of, it shows both approaches. So some cities have opted to regulate these through a zoning regulation and some have opted to regulate them through some kind of permitting or licensing, similar to like a pedo's permit or marijuana license or something like that. So they end up going with both. Now, how this would go in that township, I think, is to be determined because there's a lot of different ways that this can be approached. But the reason, I, I guess I requested to have this discussion at the board tonight and ask Karen if we could get this on the agenda, if the planning commission or planning department is to kind of go down this path and review short-term rentals and the associate regulations that would go around them for the township. It's not an easy lift and it's going to have a wide impact on the residents of the township. So I guess I kind of wanted to take the pulse of the board before we go down that path and see if there's an appetite for this type of regulation before we spend six to eight months coming up with the regulations.
Says why you're voting for a vote?
I'm not looking for a vote. I guess I'm looking for a discussion. I'm trying to.
Items for action, which means we have to vote on it.
I, okay, well, I guess I would like to take a vote of support then for this type of regulation in the township.
Okay, so we have a motion or no? Well, we'll have a discussion after a motion.
Okay.
Do you have a motion? So if there's no motion, you're sitting there very quiet.
I'd still like to discuss it.
Well, yes, as soon as we have a motion and a second, we can discuss it.
We can discuss things without a motion, Ray.
I would think so.
Not with your items for action, but that's okay. Do you want to discuss it before this? That's.
Yeah.
But items for action being the ordinance.
We don't have to vote on it just because it's on items for action. We don't have to take action.
Why is it there?
So we can take action. Yeah?
Exactly right. We'll take action.
Well, we won't.
So my question for you, Miles, apparently there is no second, so I'm not understanding what items for action is supposed to mean. But if they're going to have a discussion, my question has to do with the fact you're almost pitting, and I know other, other townships have done this because out of duck like they're doing the same kind of thing. And they do have some serious problems with the fact that you have short-term rentals that are taking place. But this doesn't say anything about land, which is partly, that's what I understood. People were actually renting pieces of their property with a tent.
I guess I haven't heard that one.
Yeah, I didn't understand what that's.
The complaint that I've heard the most is renting a home or section of a home.
So they're renting it in the summer for people to come in. Now, isn't our law enforcement supposed to be taking care of or our ordinances for noise and et cetera?
Noise, yes.
Okay, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out because it really does pit the homeowner against the rest of the community. And if there isn't enforcement for our ordinances or our laws, then obviously that can be a problem. So if you're having a party at someone's house and you're like five feet from it or eight feet, whatever it is that you have, especially if it's partly, obviously you're going to have an issue.
Yeah, I guess one of the nice mechanisms about having like a short-term rental ordinance in place is typically some kind of short-term rental permit is issued. They have to apply on a yearly basis for that permit. If there's too many violations to the standard set within that ordinance, that permit can be revoked. And then if the facility is found to still be in operation, then action, legal action can be taken by the township against that rental property.
Right, understanding that if I were partly and I knew somebody had gone ahead and received an okay to do this because they have the permit to do it, but I get turned down for the permit, isn't that going to put me in a lawsuit issue?
Why would you? You would only get turned down for the permit though if you didn't meet the standards set. And you would only get approved for the permit if you met the standards. So everyone would be held to the same standard.
Do we have any information about the number of complaints that have been received, how many short-term rentals are out there?
So.
Data?
No, that's, that's a great question. And following, I guess, the appetite to go down this path tonight, one of the first things we want to conduct is a short-term ANPRO. And I was going to mention, if we're going ahead and looking into short-term rentals, see if there's an appetite for long-term rentals, we would do a short-term and a long-term rental study and then come back with that data.
We've had two complaints.
Yeah, the first one complaint that can be brought to the board that have been handled by enforcing our current ordinance is really the parking and the noise. You know, the part of what I worry about is, you know, planning has a lot of work on its plates. The state is currently positioning to preempt local control over short-term rentals. So I'd hate to see the planning commission spend eight months working on something and only to have it moved.
I did get the action more words about that. That is, yeah, correct.
And it's not quite clear. I mean, I would say do the rental study, the short and long-term rental study, and then let the data drive what the planning commission recommends or suggests in terms of the work.
The biggest problem was the parking on Short Street. And these houses don't have any place to park. And so they were parking across the road and down on Parkies. And he has put up stakes so that they won't do that anymore. But they, people just park wherever they could, could get, and that's what they did.
Yep.
And it wasn't just one night. It happened more than once.
Yeah, it seems like they're actively running a rental service there, yeah.
Okay, so apparently what happened or what's being said is that the parking is an issue for short-term rental. So if I rent a house out for a short-term rental, I think what you're saying, if you have standards, you can only rent it out to so many people.
There would be occupancy limits, so in most of the short-term rentals, once again, using.
Dictate how many people can stay at that particular house, which of course impacts the residents who are ready to get a house party. So I guess that's where I'm in a kind of a two-edged sword.
Well, if your neighbor had a party and they all parked on you, how would you feel about it?
Frankly, that happens quite a bit, so no, that wouldn't bother. But that's because I have more acreage than.
Yeah, these people have no parking space. Two, three, maybe.
But then invite more people than what's, so even if your standard says you can have two people there, I'm just throwing this out, and six people show, is that in violation of the permit?
Well, if we were to create standards and we create occupancy limit, then yes, it would be in violation. And then we would cite them. We'd set some internal policy after so many citations, you would lose your front rent.
Aren't there other ways of addressing parking issues and other tools?
There are.
No, that's what I, thank you.
There are municipalities as well that, I mean, I was looking at Buridian Township right before this. They have rental ordinance. So, I mean, it is common in this area. But yeah, there, of course, there's other, by no means, and I'm saying this is something where the planning commission even has an appetite to do this or planning staff has an appetite to do this, but there was an issue that was pointed out. It's an option.
I would have much rather had it in items for introduction to action. It sounds like, it sounds like it means more coming out, it sounds to me. Well, obviously, I think.
This isn't the first year that's happened.
Okay.
They have parties down by the lake and they park along the road on both sides. Of course, we've only got a fifteen-foot road with Culver Drive, and they'll park up past my house. And I'm almost at Park Lake Road. And it isn't bad if it's dry. But if it happens to be a day or two after a rainstorm, the yards get tore up.
So that would be part of the standard that would be put in would be the weather?
No, the standard would be occupancy limit and maybe exceeding the occupancy limit.
So it wouldn't make any difference other than the number of cars that you have or the number of people?
Those roads owned by the township or the planning commission? I'm sorry, the road commission?
No, they're township roads.
The township roads?
Yeah.
We have no roads that we own.
So isn't.
So they were township, you mean they're county roads?
The county roads, not township roads.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, can't, can't, can't one solution, I mean, it's something, if parking's the issue, I mean, can't there be a solution of, I don't know what our parking ordinance is. They don't, there's no parking in front of driveways. But can there be like a parking by permit on streets or restriction of times for parking, especially for those smaller streets?
Most of them are twelve-foot right-of-ways. There's only two fifteen-foot, which is from Whitmore to Park Lake Road and from Duluth to Park Lake Road. It's fifteen foot.
Are the roads are.
All twelve foot.
Parking on the streets?
Uh, they've never had any problem with this until about two years ago.
And the problem comes from the short-term rentals?
Well, people are in the lake having a party and there's no place to park down there.
Okay, that has nothing to do with short-term rentals. That just means if I get a parkway.
No, but these houses that they were renting is right there on the lake. Short Street happens to be a deeper lot, and so they're, they're narrow.
No, I understand that. I guess what I'm saying is that if I own a piece of property and I have a party, then I have twenty people who come.
How robust and bring them in?
That's, well, that's the question then. That's what I'm, that's the part I'm asking.
And then you invite all your neighbors.
That's the part I'm asking. It has to do with you pitting two things against each other and that's.
When the Park Lake Tavern was there, everybody loved the music. And you could hear it all the way across the lake. And nobody complained. Now, you had a bunch of people that were complaining.
But it's not the tavern?
That was the tavern.
You know, what I'm saying is now that.
No, it's a party.
So it's a change.
Question, Miles. Miles, what, what do we do with our long-term rental policy in our law, in our rental house ordinance as far as upkeep and things like that? How does this relate to that? Do we have one of them?
So is my understanding right now that a long-term rental policy was put in place but is optional? Is that correct? A couple of years back?
Oh, exactly. It never got past the discussion part. I guess like I was being sarcastic. I'm sorry.
Okay.
My comment to you is, is why would we even consider this if we don't have that? We don't take your inspections and look at houses and make sure they're safe and people live in them. Why would we branch out and like get involved in this other thing at this point?
So we use the International Property Maintenance Code to try to deal with complaints about rentals. But there's no rental, long-term rental policy.
Yeah.
Program ordinance for long.
I, I was a planning commission deal about this today. Will I get involved in this? Think we should, or is this just an incident where you have properties or it's people?
Once, once again, it hasn't been brought to the planning commission. It did seem, I guess, appropriate to put in. It didn't seem advantageous for the planning staff and then to put in the work to go through all this research and the studies just to not have any appetite to do this.
I had to start here and not go to the planning commission first.
But I agree, Steve, if you're going to look at short-term rental policy, it should be coupled with, it should be coupled with long-term rental policy. And there has been an expression from staff that, the fire marshal that it's hard for him to enforce some of this long-term rental policy that we do have in place. He has no reason or no ability to get inside these rental properties to see what the condition is inside. Setting up some kind of yearly-based permitting process that would be coupled with some kind of inspection would grant that access that he would need to basically do his job.
Do we know how many long-term rentals we have in the township?
That would be a study, you know, that we'd have to conduct. So I guess the sense I'm kind of getting tonight is that I'm not feeling a large appetite to go after this.
A little fuzzy.
Yeah, which is, which is, which is a fine answer. That gives me, I mean, that's the whole point.
Your paragraph at the end here talks about the different agencies within the township that did this fact. And you talked about the treasures and the zoning ordinance and all that, but actually it would have an effect more on the board. We get to the treasures part unless you have fees or something to assess with something like that. That's where it wouldn't have the treasures. But where you would, where you would get, it would change my view of the way our assessing works in the flexible world we live in today. Oh, I think that it would change the assessment of the property.
There would be assessing implications.
Yes, it would. And that's how it would change. That would change it significantly as far as what the property owners own and whatnot. They could, they could do that. If you take these things in northern Michigan and you look at them up there where they do this up there quite regularly. I just came back from Drummond Island and spending some time on Drummond Island the weekend I did, and we rented one of these things. And, and, you know, you could be, you'd almost have to get out, look and see what they do and how they, how they treat the whole animal. I mean, that's a big undertaking.
It is. It is a big undertaking. So that, and it will have a large effect, which is, you know, why it's kind of seemed appropriate to talk to the board about it first before going down that path.
I'm not downplaying our community and our, our, our link over here and everything else, but I just think that we're, we should be taking, taking care of our renters and their rights and what they have on the property. And the property owners who rent houses out to people and what they have. I mean, we're going to do anything, but we've never gotten past putting this board, this table right here since I've been here.
There is rental housing regulations on our website.
Yes, there is. But they're not really, you never really seem to hear too much about it. And I don't know why that is. You mentioned the standards.
International Property Maintenance Code.
We have a lady that was involved in doing that. She's still involved in that. She was a real estate lady that was still involved in doing that. Terry Wood out there.
She was our, when houses were condemned, dangerous structure.
Yeah.
She was part of the dangerous, dangerous structure process.
I think that's right. I think that's what that was geared more towards. It was geared toward clean, that kind of stuff like that there.
It's separate. So there's Article Three, Property Maintenance Code, which includes rental housing regulations. And then two articles later is the dangerous buildings or structures.
All right.
It is pretty well laid out here, but you're right. We, I had to look. That's how, that's how much I've heard of it.
Well, I do think it's worthwhile to look into this.
Yes.
I would start with a study. I, you know, I hear quite a few complaints about the, from college students who live over in Chammers Cross area in terms of the quality of the facilities there, so.
I will be the bar.
All right, I'm going to make a suggestion. You guys have to let me know if this is okay. We have this under items for action and not real crazy about that. So if we couldn't move this to our next meeting, we could postpone it till our next meeting. In that time, do more study on how that impact takes place.
It would take longer. It would take much longer.
I mean, you can get a number of apartments in this, in this township, but that would just be apartment buildings.
Gotcha. Would November be a better?
Yeah, probably wait November.
I don't think this takes precedence over the other work that the planning commission is doing.
Well, that's the question.
I mean, that's my thought. Two complaints. I feel bad that folks, these two folks have had problems, but I just did a cursory view on Airbnb and Verbo and there's like seven total short-term rentals in the township. So I'd hate to derail the work that the planning commission is doing that we have also sent to them to replace it with this, which.
Replace, and that would be the only other type of discussion. Otherwise, we take a vote on it and work it from that one. So do we have a second for a vote? And I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion, um, for the short-term rental regulation enforcement. For a short-term. So in other words.
To what?
I'm sorry, to what?
To do what?
Well, that's, that's a good question. What would you do for your?
Yeah. No, so that, what I'm looking.
That's part of the discussion.
What I'm looking for tonight is guidance on what the next step should be. And so Jason suggested that we, trustee Elmer, you suggested that maybe we do a comprehensive study and take stock of what our short-term and possibly long-term rental inventory looks like in the township. So that would be one good step.
And then we as planning commission, correct? And then Ryan says, which he's right because I've been there, their plate's full, but you'd have to move everything off the plate.
Staff could do the precursory work of, of assessing how many units are there.
Did that answer the question?
Is the planning commission updating the comprehensive plan?
We will begin updating it in 2025. I think at this point to.
That's what I can like.
To do a, to do a full update, to be on our timeline to amend the plan 2020, just pass it this year's 2027. But this could be a facet of that. So I think I see where you're going with that.
So what you're saying is just put it on hold. What's your idea?
I, I was under the assumption that the planning commission was going to re-up the comprehensive plan this, uh, next year. But I was obviously mistaken with that. So my suggestion would be, you know, to consider a series of studies related to housing. And so, uh, not just rentals, but, you know, affordable housing. Adequacy of the housing stock currently in our area. I, I think the Chandler's Crossing area has been kind of an issue for township for quite some time. So I'm not sure how they would play into that, but I think having a better understanding of exactly where our condition is, scope, number of units available, likely helpful for, for longer.
Agreed.
No, I, I get, so where does that with the planning commission? And we've got one of the commissioners here besides. So what does that?
I mean, I think we either don't refer it and we sit on it, or we refer it. And I mean, my recommendation would be let the planning commission put it in its plan where it sees fit, rather than us artificially saying this is a important thing that should happen in the next month. So we still give the direction to the planning commission to look into this, but allow them to control their own schedule.
So our item fraction would be to move this to the planning commission? Is that?
Yeah, to put in their work or schedule as they see fit.
So it could be three years, four years, whatever their workload. So we're not putting any kind of end date on it. We're just saying into the planning commission. Does that sound right?
I mean, we only plan a year ahead, so I can't imagine that the planning commission would artificially place it that far. It might be at the end of the year and get pushed into like next year, but, I mean, I can't speak for all of them, but I, it would be an odd thing for someone, for something to be moved three or four years out.
Yes. But the action might have, could also be have the player study. Long-term units and short-term units, how many are available that we could, could be just studying the number.
Yeah, I'm just worried about his capacity sort of travels along the same capacity as the planning commission.
I agree.
But you're his boss, so you say he has the capacity.
No.
I'm just saying that if, if they were to work it into next year's plan, it, it might not be, take the whole thing on. It could be breaking it down into a step that says, let's assess what we have in the township.
Okay, because it's talking about regulation enforcement. It's not necessarily the numbers of how many we have, which is part of the discussion.
I said that it would, basically if the board had an appetite to pursue the regulations and the guidelines, I mean, the board can craft its motion to be, just refer it to the planning commission.
Oh, no question. That's an easy way out. I mean, that, that works.
But that would still give us good guidance and.
But that's.
Trustee, you've been was correct. Obviously, our ban with to do things, if we take up one item, it's putting them behind other items. And if, I agree that's appropriate for the planning, if there's appetite here, doing a study would be a great first step. That would give us guidance and it makes perfect sense that that would go to the planning commission to determine their schedule for that. So I guess I agree with both trustees here.
So the motion would be that the short-term rentals for regulation enforcement would be sent to the planning commission?
Yep, to propose a time schedule to do a housing inventory study of short and long-term rentals.
So you want to put the long-term, which is.
That sounded, that sounded like what I was getting at, plus I'm wrong about that.
I have one question. If you don't hold on this, we have a, we get a motion for this in a second, which I'm not clearly able to have or not. But is it the board's idea that they could do this for the regulation of, of the protection of homeowners who don't have rental houses? Or is this, or is this, is this the board's idea of revenue stream for the township to have to take and finance, uh, more things that go on the township here? I guess that's what I'd like to know before I hold on this. That's a fair question.
This is a fair question.
I think it's a fair question. Absolutely. I guess from my perspective, um, it's always at the protection and I think that point could probably be debated either way. But from my perspective, it's always for the protection of adjacent homeowners.
So we're not enlarging our government here by doing this and then creating a whole bunch of new things, fees and things?
You would, you would be creating new fees. You probably wouldn't be adding additional staff.
That's a little crappy of me to say that that way.
No, that's, it makes sense.
That's a fair point.
This isn't a resort community. This is a community where people come home and they live here, they work hard, landscaping, these landscaping, wherever close by, you come back here, it's very lax and raised family and then living in, in, uh, their homes or rent their homes, I guess, a long-term rental situation. So I'm not sure where you, I'm just trying to decide, well, by how, how much I want to change the community.
I think if there's seven, that tells me there's not a significant number. It's, it's possible that we, after doing a comprehensive study of how many, could decide that we need to address it through parking restrictions or other regulations. It may not be implementing regulations and enforcement strategies and creating another level of government. It could be just cleaning up other.
When you look at the rental house, the apartment buildings and such, when they go in there and they sign a lease from one of them, I don't, I don't have one, but I'm assuming that there's something saying you can't sub-lease to somebody else. And so they're, they're, um, they can't do that. But if you look at somebody's single-family home, you don't have that, that option. So there's an also, there's another little piece that plays into this, but, um, if you want to open a can of worms, property rights play into this. Versus personal property rights or the property rights of what they can do with their home or not. If you got three or four people that own homes over here, the dog horse community over here on Chandler Road, one of them over there, and they're, they're going to be gone during parts of, parts of the year in B of Florida or wherever they're going to be, if there's home version or whatever, they, they may want to take and, uh, capitalize on that. But I don't know, maybe there, there's homeowners association over there, H O A, if we just validate further that is, just to make that accurate. We've had somebody talk about that.
Appreciate that.
Uh, they, they, they may have rules and regulations that say that they can't do that.
They like we do.
Yes, thank you.
There's one in my neighborhood. There's one in my neighborhood.
Yes.
That's right. You live over there, don't you?
Very well-known. Um, well, that, that makes it a little, I certainly would support moving it to the planning commission. If we were going to take a vote with it now, I would support, because I think you're, uh, you're pitting people against each other, which that's why we buy a home. Um, so.
We don't have the appetite.
I was just going to say, I don't think the appetite's either for items of action or any, what are your thoughts with it, guys?
I think it should be studied. So we know what we got.
I think that makes sense.
But if we study, we should do long and short-term.
Yes.
We should study parking in Park Lake.
Parking in Park Lake.
On twelve-foot roads.
You did a good job of this work, Steve. I think it's a little insane, guys, on the piece of water, but they can take that figure over there.
All right, and I, I think this board is saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it would go to the planning commission. At their best guess as to when this would be looked at. So there's not, see, for me, I would much rather have a term on it, but I understand what Ryan is saying. Um, and he's on the planning commission, so he understands, and I do understand, the plate's full. So moving it to the top of the list would probably not be a good thing. But I don't want it to go to the bottom of the list anymore. So I'm hoping the planning commission will understand that there is concern here, if I'm saying that correctly, for this board to study what's going on. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I'm going to have to take you home with me. I'm just too tired. But if that's what we'll do, then that's what the action will be, is that we're assigning, the board will assign it to the planning commission. Sorry, Todd. One more thing.
Or we don't assign it to the planning commission.
And what are you going to do with it?
We can do nothing. Township staff can do a study on their own. Planning commission can dig into it if they have the desire.
You always send everything to the planning commission. So it's, it's up to this board as to what they want to do, what your actions are.
We get all sorts of stuff that's from the planning commission that they develop on their own. They have that authority.
Yes, they do.
Work on whatever they want.
That's exactly right.
I don't know why we need to step in. If we have, you know, no strong interest in this.
But there appears to be a very strong interest in it. For long-term as well as short-term. So I guess that's. About taking a vote, which I would take a vote, but we're not taking a vote. Is that correct?
And no second.
No second. Um, so the planning, now what happens with it? Does, if it goes to the planning commission, can we officially vote, you officially, Ryan, because you're, uh, is appointed?
Well, if we want it to be referred to the planning commission, we should vote on that.
You want to refer it, is that, well, then we'll change what this item fraction is. So the item fraction is the short-term rentals. So what we want to do, even though we accepted this agenda as is, what this board wants to do, if I'm understanding it, is they want to vote on sending it to planning commission.
I'm comfortable doing absolutely nothing.
I'm sure.
I just don't feel any energy from this board to do anything with this at this point. So I think my advice would be let's move on on the agenda.
Well, then let's vote it down.
There's nothing to vote on, Ray.
Well, item fraction.
It's, it's a topic. It's not an actual motion that you're voting on here. These are topics. And so we've discussed this topic. Sounds like we don't want to take action and so we can move forward.
So the action is no action. Okay, new business.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Miles. You have a whole lot, Miles, but thank you. Item for introduction and discussion. There doesn't seem to be any new business.
No, no, we've got a item for action that you missed.
What did I miss?
D, extension of employment agreement.
The one we moved down.
Oh, I put that item fraction in the new business. Okay. You wanted under unfinished business.
I am.
That is where we put it, yeah.
Was under B, item for action.
That's what I thought. I, I guess I'm. But is that for new business or for unfinished business?
Large B, small D.
That's what.
Under thirteen.
And, okay, then. So you put a D here. Okay, I've got it in the wrong place then. So thank you for the reminder. And then that's the month-to-month. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to make sure I've got you in the right? So I put it in the wrong place. I put it under. Okay, so apparently we are going to look at thirteens, item for action, D is in David, we're fishing month-to-month, uh, contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Please.
Uh, due to us not having done Karen's review, uh, which we wanted to do before we renegotiate her contract, and assuming that we all don't want to be without a superintendent right now. I would move to temporarily extend the superintendent's contract using the month-to-month option as outlined in her contract, item number one, for no more than ninety days.
Support.
Thank you. All right, we'll call.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Keel's class?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Bell, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will do, if I need to do new business, there wasn't any items for introduction and discussion, so we'll go to B. So this would be fourteen B and this reads as supervisor's request. Okay, for legal opinion and opening the mail. Okay, so I'm apparently making a request. For legal opinion. Um, you have in your packet. A request that was made in July. And the answer that was received, you guys, you all received the, uh, email. The items that were brought out for the reasons for me were kind of interesting. And then, of course, our attorney was contacted by our superintendent with regards to.
No.
Or by me, who he sent to both of us. Okay, and his answer from my standpoint is, it's about, he's opting out. Um, he's making a decision. The question that we have is whether or not the township, whether our staff, has the correct thought process, because I don't know if we have a policy on this, I was, I know we don't have a policy on it, of opening elected officials' mail. So that's apparently what's looking for discussion.
Did you ask us for this to be on the agenda? Oh.
So I, I, this is what I'm saying. I don't understand, but this is what's requested and these are, yes, the question for items for action is a request for the legal opinion and the opening of township mail. A legal opinion was granted. Months later, um, with regards to this issue. And my point being, if I'm going to take point on it, is whether or not the township has the authority to open elected officials' mail. And that's, I guess. Although it does have to jump in here. Although it does have to jump in here.
Since. I was just waiting.
No.
Um, so when the request came to the deputy treasurer for staff not to open the supervisor's mail, I contacted MTA, and their reasoning is what is included in the email that was sent to the board and to the front office staff on July sixth.
Okay.
And then the.
I'm not the fourth, okay. Can we start at number one?
Yeah.
Okay, this is MTA's. They're saying mail item may need to go to another person responsible for the action or information.
Their, their response was that, and I can share that response.
Okay, no.
Their response was that mail does not belong to any one person, mail belongs to the township.
So that's what I'm saying. Is this board going to make a policy that states that elected officials are included in, we understood that this is what this was for, this is not staff.
I mentioned it as elected officials.
Because they are elected officials. They're all.
Everything you receive belongs to the township.
So no matter who.
Correct.
They are. MTA is saying that that's.
Every document that's received by the township belongs to the township.
Well, it was very interesting from the standpoint of me, when it was like, do I not know enough? If there's something that came in my mail that goes to the treasurer, or goes to the clerk, that I wouldn't pass that on. That's, that's why I read this and I thought, well, that's.
But that happens to everybody's mail, not just your mail, everyone's mail.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say. I'm elected official, I'm not staff, so we have no policy.
So everything received by the clerk and the treasurer is also open. There are elected officials as well.
And that's what I'm saying. Do we have a policy that allows that to take place? And this is what this board has to decide. If there's a policy that states that the mail has to be opened for elected officials. And that's basically what that is, I think.
I think.
There's actually a statute, and, and as treasurer, I don't want to open the mail.
I don't want to open.
I want the employees to open all the mail, because that's what you call internal controls.
Separation of duties.
How you have more than one person touching everything and handling everything. Eventually, I get it all, I get to look at it, but I, let's take it, for instance, let's take tax bills. Because if you want to talk about the elected officials on the, on the treasure. Tax bills. Okay, we've got four thousand five hundred and sixty-three different parts of property to get paid on, and it comes by mail. About probably eighty-seven percent of that, it comes by mail, then we have a little bit of ACH. Okay, so there's a little bit of mail right there every day during the tax season. It doesn't matter what day it could be, it could be spread out all over. You have twenty-six hundred and forty-three, forty-seven, something like that, sewer bills. They get, they come, and all this stuff comes to the treasurer. It says treasurer on it, it doesn't say anything else. But that's why we have office staff to do this stuff. And you have all the other mail that comes, that is associated with the treasurer's office, and prompt people, and the prompt is what we hire them for, and we train them. And we teach them to take and review this, and look at this, and what this does is it gives two sets of eyes that looks at it, and two different people handle it. And this is money, and this is very important, because it's good to have lots of internal controls and lots of people touching it. And that way, we have a log, because when they take and they take and receive it then, their name just went in the computer, and then they're logged. We know exactly who it come from, when it came, and everything else. It also got date stamped, as far as when it got received. And it got scrutinized that way. There's lots of stuff out there that come that everybody gets to read. Good for them. I'm glad they read it. I hope they learn a lot, because they may have to do a job someday.
Then my question for you, that's kind of a mystery. That's an understatement.
That's the treasurer's, it's, it's bought on us.
Well, it's not just treasurer, it also involves clerk, it also involves, you know, supervisor. So if, if in fact inadvertently it was sent from your, from yours, for example, I do committees.
Yep.
So my committees that come in should be just for me, correct? So if your treasurer.
You're telling the story, not me.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling the story. So the treasurer, in its ability, regardless of whether you or anybody else, in the treasurer's ability to function, they need to be able to specifically get whatever treasurer information goes to. It doesn't come to me. It doesn't go to, to, to our clerk or to our trustees. It goes to you, because you're the treasurer, and they know that.
No, it goes to the front office staff, because it belongs to bad territory township, because it's a bad territory township document.
Okay.
By law.
By law. So eventually, it gets to you. We'll, we'll put it that way. Eventually, you, you get it, so that you know exactly what's there and what's happening and what's going on. You're absolutely correct. Front desk is crucial, and they do a great job. The problem is when it's diverted to someplace else. So that's what I'm saying. If we have a policy that says all our elected officials, your mail is going to be opened, and it will be sent to the proper individual, it will be diverted, it will be sent to the proper person that goes to.
Sometimes it works when you're the one person.
Okay.
So they make a base, it'll go to both people.
Okay, but if they don't open it, they don't always know who it goes to. So that's what, and that's exactly right. So as an elected official, your mail will be opened, and Al's will be open, and Ryan's will be open, if it comes to the township. What we're saying is it'll be open. And then it's directed to you specifically, not diverted someplace.
If it belongs there.
If it belongs there. That's the question. Okay, nope. So do we have a policy or not? Or do we need a policy?
No.
You think it's running just fine the way it is?
I think everybody works as a team real well around here.
Oh, no, I'm not.
I didn't say.
Thank you. I was gonna say, I'm always told I'm not, even though I vote many times with it, but that's not the point. The point is that if you think that everything is run smoothly, that you don't need a policy for elected officials, then I'm certainly in agreement with that, if that's what you agreed to. I don't personally think that's true. I think we need a policy that says, as elected officials, your mail should be open.
What are you gonna do if somebody sends you a check, a tax, or sends you a check.
God, oh, I have rights to get it here.
For something else, well, wouldn't you think that maybe the people that open the mail would know that?
You would think that, wouldn't you? Yes.
How about an election ballot? How's it supposed to feel out here in the, in the audience, if somebody takes and opens their election ballot, passes it around, but that's a deep ballot around the office three or four times.
That's not what we're saying. That's not at all what we're saying. What's being said is, as an elected official, do you have a right to have your mail open?
I don't know, I mean.
Then you can, you can have all your mails open. So then the policy would ring that all elected officials' mail will be open. Why do we need a policy? Yes, you do need a policy.
It's the law.
Not for an elected official.
It is the law for statue per auditing purposes, so you have to have checks and balances in place, and that's the way you're getting them.
For the tre, I'm saying elected, I'm not a treasurer.
It's for you, too. You just refuse to take and, and abide by laws that you don't like.
Oh, come on. I used to be in that position of having to do no one.
You're still in that position, and you're, you're, you're going against it right now.
Marie.
Yes.
It sounds like there's not support for this, but if you had a policy, hold on. If you had a policy you wanted us to look at, and you wanted to make a motion, you have that right to do that.
I, that's what it says here. The supervisor's request for a legal opinion on opening of township mail. So if that's what you're saying, then I should write the policy. I have no problem writing the policy. Correct?
Yeah, if you would like to spend your time, though, Marie, but it's pretty clear the rest of us don't support that policy. I'm just saying you have the right, like anybody else, to bring us a policy.
Tell me to send it. I already know.
I didn't tell you, Marie. I said that you have that option, just like the rest of us.
Yes, I do.
Instead of arguing about the concept, we don't even have a policy that we're looking at.
That's correct. So why is it here?
Because I think you asked for a legal opinion.
No, I asked for a legal opinion from, and his legal opinion, as far as I was concerned with it, I think you've read it, there is no opinion.
Right. He said he wants permission from the board in order to write a legal opinion. You're right, it is not an opinion.
It's not an opinion.
So unless we are going to authorize that to happen, he's saying he's not going to do it.
That's not what this item for action states.
Regardless, that's what the memo from him states.
Well, I can't help what the memo says. That's not what this says.
Well, that's why you got ahold of him, was to get his opinion.
And his opinion was, he doesn't have an opinion.
No, his opinion was he's not going to give it unless the board authorizes him to expend our money from taxpayers to do that.
And I, from this point of view, for future reference, this has to be done.
Marie, it's, it's okay if you don't agree. I, I'm sorry we don't agree. I just think we should move on.
Then let's move on.
Okay.
Okay, so the item for action doesn't have an action. Okay. Okay, so now we're at B, B, which would be the twenty-twenty-three scrap clean-up grant application.
Thank you. What you have before you is a request from me to complete and submit the twenty-twenty-three scrap tire cleanup grant for community cleanups by October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. This money, which is usually a thousand dollars each year, goes to pay off our scrap tire trailer. And we have Tom King Memorial Junk Day scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. And if we continue to work doing that, we work with Environmental Rubber Recycling of Flint, Michigan, which is approved tire processor for the grant.
You have a vote for this?
I was on this.
With the vote of passion to approve the two thousand twenty-three scrap tire grant application, superintendent grant to submit correct paperwork to do so to Eagle, Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes.
Second.
Okay.
Let's get this thing going.
I don't know who's got the second. I heard.
She did.
She ready got it.
She just, she's got it.
Okay.
All right, so we need to vote.
Mr. Pugh's class?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, yes? Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like we are on items for action C, which is the twenty-twenty-two first quarter budget amendments.
What you have before you, I believe, are six items that will help show up our budget towards the end of the year. Three thousand dollars is proposed to be used from cemetery fund mailers for two items on the second page, which are new vinyl graphic signs, some new aluminum panels, and some new Hudson Loud signs for both Pleasant Hill and Rose Cemeteries for a cost of twenty-seven hundred. And the headstone grapple came in over budget by three hundred dollars, so three thousand dollars will be used out of the cemetery fund. The additional requests are to cover furnace repair and building grounds, repair and maintenance, furnace filters, and repair of the township sweeper. Equipment purchase, replacement of sitting chairs, old office chairs, and locking cabinets. The purchase of a new phone for a DPW employee and a phone stipend for a new DPW employee, excuse me. And then equipment purchase, including bulk storage racks, storage cabinets, chair lockers, and wall cabinets for DPW. And the final item is epoxy for the, for the DPW garage floor. The original budgets for those lines have been expended, and these, leaving these items unfunded. Please.
So you have nine hundred dollars for DPW garage floor epoxy application. But then in the budget, you have nine thousand five hundred dollars for DPW garage floor epoxy.
Give me just one second. Was that building grounds?
Yeah, page seventeen.
Thank you.
You're talking about the twenty-three budget?
Yeah, twenty-three budget.
Okay, is this one's talking about the twenty-two budget?
This is, yeah, this is twenty-two budget.
So how often do you epoxy the garage floor DPW?
That's how much you want to look.
Is it necessary? Why is there nine hundred dollars for a.
The nine hundred dollars was for the break room and an office, and the other cost is actually for the entire, the entirety of the rest of the building.
So it's been done.
Yes.
Yeah. And so what we're looking at is general funds.
Yeah.
For the budget, because we didn't know they were going to use, that we didn't need repair, correct?
So the budget amendment is for epoxy of the break room and not the garage floor.
And not the, and not the garage floor.
And, correct. But it's coming out of general funds from twenty-two.
Correct. Sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for.
Well, now that we have the discussion before, amendment, motion, or a second. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the third quarter twenty-twenty-two budget amendments as presented.
Second.
All right, the other discussion. It seems to be, so take a vote.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, yes? Ms. Howe?
No.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Pugh's class?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, if you can take this for.
Thank you. Thank you for another productive evening. I appreciated our work during the work session. I hope that you're finding the process this year with the additional notes more helpful, and I, I believe it's helping us move along. Questions have been asked in between, and I appreciate the opportunity to answer those in between our sessions as well. I will be applying, reporting, I should say, not applying, to the City Village Township Revenue Sharing Program, CVTRS. It's how we receive part of our revenue sharing payment by December first. These are reports that are due each year to the Department of Treasury, and I will be sharing them with you as well. They are also made public on our website per Treasury guidelines, so that any resident in the township can see them at any time. It talks about our spending, our budget, and our long-term debt that we carry, and then gives a rating positive, neutral, or negative on certain items such as roads, and, and different items such as the senior center attendance. But things that happen within the township that our money goes to assist, and whether those are improving the community or improving in others. So I'll be doing that, and I'll share that with you. This board authorized me to move towards negotiating two properties, two vacant lands on Park Lake Road. We've reached an agreement of ninety thousand dollars for those properties, and closing will take place in October. COVID risk levels obviously continue to fluctuate between medium and high. As Treasurer Wissfasser indicated, there was an outbreak, or, I'm sorry, a possible exposure last week of township. We take those very seriously, and we always ask that people, whether from the public, our staff, or our elected officials, if you're not feeling well, that you don't come into the office, or that you mask and maintain social distance. It's going to be a long winter, but I think if we all do our part with our own health, we will help to keep our fellow colleagues healthy as well. I shared earlier during the work session, the averages for the last month for the senior center, which is averaging approximately forty people per serving day, one day Wednesday, Friday. There were twelve serving days in September. The days that we had fifty or fifty-plus people was one, and actually, to-gos are trending higher, and we're averaging approximately twenty-four to-gos a day. That's a trend that we've seen increase, nothing but increase since the end of COVID. I think there are still people in our, our older adult community that still aren't comfortable coming out and having lunch at the center, but they're still accessing a nutritional meal, and we're still happy to have them and serve them. I am working towards, since COVID, and since the opportunities that people have in our communities to drop their medications at different pharmacies in our community, as well as at our police department, there's a medication drop box. It's secured. The Department of Waste Management for Clayton County is no longer holding medication collection days. I've had a request from the Senior Center Advisory Committee to move forward with the medication collection, so I'm working to try to make that arrangement, to have a police officer and a licensed pharmacist attend an event that we can promote here in the township and collect, especially controlled substances that can later be destroyed. that can later be destroyed in the proper manner instead of being dumped down the toilet or thrown away in the trash where other vulnerable populations can get ahold of them or thereby polluting our environment. So when I have more information on that, I will make sure to let all of you know. Our deputy superintendent has moved ahead with our check request for the deposit of the AV upgrades for this room. And once that deposit is received by the company, they will order our equipment. And tomorrow begins the, I believe, fifteen-day, if that's correct, opening of our acceptance of marijuana, recreational marijuana applications. So that begins tomorrow and runs through at least next week. Thank you. So our staff up front with those come in during the day will be moving to, to have Miles on standby and will be taking in those applications and those monies that are associated with those applications. They will be secured and then they will be transported to our legal counsel for a competitive review process, at which time that concludes. Those will come back to this board for a decision as to who will receive the one retail application that we have available and potentially the other applications that can be applied for during this time.
Question?
Please.
What, what would the application be, I believe, Miles, with five thousand dollars for an APB? And if they return down, is this money got to go back to them or is it? So this is not a trust and agency type of receipt. This is actually going to go into the general fund. So where one needs to get, the township general fund will realize five thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Have we had many inquiries on the other licenses that are available?
I don't think we've had any inquiries. One. Oh, okay. My apologies. I wasn't right there. One, one for you.
Thanks.
So aren't these supposed to be multi-use facilities with multiple applications? So it's, it'll be worth in five thousand.
That's correct. So the retail requires grow and processing, if I'm correct. And that's at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars to apply.
It's five thousand per issue.
Yeah.
You know?
And they're, they're stackable.
Non-refundable.
Non-refundable.
Well, you're talking about growing, you're talking about processing.
It's called a stack.
Yeah. So it's five grand per issue.
Well, since our attorneys are going to be so involved in that process, we'll be racking up the legal fees as well.
Part of that will be extended in that, yes.
And remember, when you do that, you're going to pay for your minimum annual budget. Therefore, to take it in paper, that's a bit of a legal budget. It's not going to go with standard. Come back to this board before the end of the year. Take care of that.
That budget will go up in smoke.
The what?
The budget will go up in smoke.
That's a pun.
What else can you do it for?
Some chew it, some chew it. I'm sure my age, I know.
Oh, thank you. If you have any questions?
I think you already did it all. So, thank you. All right. We're on item sixteen, which is public statements. Anybody? Seriously? There you go. Come on.
Crowd for none of your statements.
Yeah.
All right. Meg Ritchie, Outer Drive. I appreciated all the discussions that we did have this evening. Thank you. I'm, I'm glad you decided to, I don't know the wording, but ta- table the issue of rentals until later. Maybe I was, did I hear correctly when you were having the discussion about the short-term rentals? Was this your complaint, Mr. Rosencrant? Were you talking about your property that people were? Okay.
My neighbors.
Your, your neighbors?
The houses are down off of, off of Whitmore Drive, on Short Street. Not on your end of town.
No, no, no. I, well, I, I was curious as to how this made it here so quickly. And I think that maybe explains some of it. Also, I wanted to just say to you that as I was leaving the podium last time and I asked for any questions or comments, this is directed directly at you, Mr. Rosencrant. I asked for any questions or comments and nobody had any. And as I was walking out the door, you made a sarcastic and snide comment about me.
I did?
You did. As I said that I would be back and you said, can't wait.
I said, I said, can't wait?
Yes. You, you mumbled it and I just wanted you to know.
Usually everybody hears everything I say, so.
That's right.
I'm surprised that I mumbled it.
Is that an apology or?
I don't think I said it. But I tell you what, we'll listen to the, the recording and if I did say it, I will apologize.
Disappointing. Okay. Well, on that note, I will say good evening.
Anybody else that has published statements? Well, it doesn't seem to be. So we have board member comments, number seventeen.
I will say, thank you. I will say nice job to Karen and her team for negotiating the cost of the new property down by Park Lake. That'll be a nice addition to enhance our community and the activities and save a little bit of taxpayer money.
Thank you for coming. Have a good night. Thank you for coming and have a good night.
I just want to let you know that the clerk's office and the front staff are working hard at getting all the permanent AV applications sent out. We have over two thousand and we're working on hopefully to be sent out by Friday.
Will those extra two days be really helpful?
Extra two days.
That the legislature just approved to process AV ballots?
Yes, yes.
Thank you all for coming and staying with us almost eight thirty. So we've been here for two hours. Greatly appreciate it.
I'd like to thank all of our staff members and our township elected and non-elected officials for everything they do for the community. And I thank everybody in the community here and I thank everybody that comes to the meeting. And if you get a chance, say hi to your neighbors. Shake their hand and say something good and positive to them because our world could use some positive people. And we're, we're, it seems to be in a bit of a rock right now and it rubs off on everybody. I appreciate what my elected people do everywhere, whether it's state, local, federal. But I appreciate the people who show up to these meetings. Thank you.
No comment.
That's good. All right. Looks like we could take a vote to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Support.
Ms. Butler-Tyler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Westfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Almrichi?
Yes.
Mr. Pugh's plus?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have a minute? I didn't, I'm glad you said we did because I didn't intend to. No answer or was an answer. If no one's got the appetite to pick it up, I mean, that's the whole reason I wanted to come here.
All about meaning facilitation, man.
But yeah, that's basically gave me the guidance we're looking for, which is towns like to be appropriate to do all this research in time just to come here and get looking down.
Yeah, it does sound like there's interest in what's happening in housing.
And we will, in that way, isn't that, to Jason's point, we'll have to evaluate for the next comprehensive.
Yeah.
For what, what position? Oh, okay. Yeah. All right. You live on, you live on up to, or live on Picacro? Oh, well, glad to meet you. Which, who?
It shows that we are responsive to complaints and the board makes a decision. Uh-oh.
Who did you buy the house from? Who did you buy their house, your house from?
Built it.
Oh.